Honorable Minister, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it is a very happy moment for Lelongue City Council to witness this day. For a long time, we have delivered our services, we have interacted with our clients, with our residents, and we do believe that the best way forward was to take in consideration of the so many information and advice and directions that were given by the public. One issue is for us to plan. The two documents that we are launching today bring great joy and pride, not only to the management of the city council, but I am very certain even for all you members that are here. I will not say much, and as we go into the program, we will have a few presentations where we will also appreciate the background and the essence of these two documents. So without much ado, I'd like to invite our chief executive officer, Mr. John Chomey, to give us his welcome remarks. Thank you.
Allow me to take off my mask so that I can be clearly audible. Our guest of honor, the Deputy Minister for Local Government, Honorable Halim Adoud, your worship, the Mayor of the City of Lelongue, Councillor Juliana Kaduya, the Director of the Ministry of Local Government, Mr. Richard Hara, the Director General of the National Planning Commission, Dr. Thomas Montali, PCs and senior government officials, the representative of the country director of the World Bank, all development partners, the Vice Mayor of the City of Lelongue, Chairperson of Council Committees and MPs of the City of Lelongue, private sector representatives, Red Peers representatives, and representatives of various interest groups in our city, colleagues from Lelongue City Council and also from other cities in the country, members of the media, ladies and gentlemen. We at Lelongue City Council have been listening to our residents, to our communities, and to our businesses. We have listened to their aspirations, to their frustrations, to their hardships, their complaints, but also their joys. We have listened to their ideas and their suggestions on how to transform this city. We have asked them what they want for their city. We have synthesized all this and they all point to a vision that will guide all our actions for the next five years. So our shared vision, as you can see, is clean, green, and prosperous Lelongue. But what does this vision mean? Clean, it's about safely managing waste in all its forms. It's about cleanliness of our premises, whether they are our homes, our offices, our businesses, our factories, our markets, our streets. It's about the quality of our buildings. It's about the quality of our open spaces. And more importantly, it's about mindset change. Because most of the problems that we are getting in the cleanliness sector, if you allow me to use that, is also primarily due to our mindset. Then the second thing is we want our city to be green. Yes, it is about greening our city, but it's beyond that. It's about nature conservation. It's about landscape restoration. It's about parklands across the city. It's about access to nature services. It's about the resilience of our city, and it's about our carbon footprint. And then finally, we want our city to be prosperous. And this is about wealth creation, investments, jobs, opportunities, improved services, improved quality of life, and making Lelongue competitive as an investment destination. So why have we embarked on the formulating strategic plan but also on having a client service charter? There are a number of reasons we have done that. The first one is already, as already pointed out by the Director of Ceremonies, is that the City Council of Lelongue simply did not have these important tools to inform our budgeting, our planning, our implementation, and monitoring of results. Secondly, the plan and the charter aim to transform our city. It was agreed after many years of suboptimal performance by the city council that a new beginning, a fresh start was needed in order to rebuild the confidence of our citizens, our partners, but also the confidence of the staff working in the city council. Thirdly, this is an opportunity moment for us because Malay 2063 has urbanization as one of the three pillars for Malawi's transformation. Lelongue, as the capital city of Malawi and also as the largest city in the country, must be well positioned to contribute to the realization of the national vision. And these tools, the strategic plan and the charter, they are essential tools towards that end. And finally, the client service charter is a sign of our commitment to deliver better services to the residents of the City of Lelongue and also to be held accountable for results. So in a nutshell, what is in the strategic plan? Our plan is for five years, up to 2025. It is an ambitious but necessary set of reforms under very challenging circumstances, notably the COVID pandemic, but also the sluggish economy. Given the breadth and the challenges in front of us, the strategic plan focuses on a few manageable innovative priorities and big ideas, many of which involve establishing strong management fundamentals. The plan is supported by a detailed roadmap to success and is divided into three components and the eighteen strategic objectives. The three components of the plan are to do with fixing the city's finances and our goal is to significantly increase revenues, better allocating and managing available resources, and freeing up resources to expand the delivery of critical services in our city. The second pillar is management reforms. And our goal here is to adopt modern management practices by unleashing private sector initiatives, partnering, and embedding a culture of good governance, efficient service delivery, and accountability for results. The last pillar, but not least, is service delivery with the goal of providing services in a more efficient and cost-effective manner focusing on private sector development, environmental protection, solid waste management, transport, public health, and town planning. The strategic plan, we have the full version and also the abbreviated version. The abbreviated version is also in Tijewa. And all these documents, together with the client service charter, can be also downloaded from our website, www.lcc.mw. So what does all this mean for our week at Lelongue City Council? What it means is that our budgeting and our annual work planning and programming are now fully aligned to the strategic plan. Staff performance assessments are now benchmarked upon the attainment of the strategic plan targets and milestones as well as on the client service charter. So I think it's all very well and it's all so easy to formulate plans and it's so easy to launch them. But as they say, the proof of the pudding is in the eating. And here I want to address the issue of accountability. We have a monitoring and reporting framework for both the strategic plan and also the client service charter. The roadmap to success of the strategic plan that I talked about details all the implementable activities, the timelines, and also the responsibilities. It also details a wider set of performance indicators. So I wanted to say that although the strategic plan is being launched today in 2021, its implementation actually started in the last financial year, 2020-2021. And already, an independent assessment of our performance in the first year of implementation has been carried out, and the report is already out. That report, you can download it from our website, but we're also going to send to you our partners through your emails. This is to emphasize the fact that we are not going to let this document to gather dust on our desks. This document becomes really for us the benchmark on which the people of this city are going to assess us. So allow me now, as I move towards finishing my remarks, to thank several people, organizations who have made this plan and this charter possible. First of all, I'd like to thank the residents of this City of Lelongue who took part in the formulation process of the plan by participating in workshops, by submitting their comments through various fora or through various platforms to the city council. I would like to thank Lelongue City Council management and staff who have formulated the client service charter and also who supported and facilitated the formulation of the strategic plan. Allow me also in a special way to thank those staff members who have worked day and night to prepare and organize for this launch. I thank our worship, the mayor, and the councillors and the MPs of this city for their participation and support throughout the whole process. Finally, I would like to thank the World Bank because it was through their support, through the Lelongue Water and Sanitation Project that the strategic plan has been realized. In conclusion, I would like to end with an appeal to you, the residents of the City of Lelongue. We now have the plan that defines an ambitious, reform-minded direction forward for our city. LCC has designed this program of deep fundamental change to meet the service delivery expectations of you, the residents of this city. The primary responsibility of the implementation of this plan lies with LCC. And in this, I count, I continue to appeal to all staff and councillors of LCC to step up and be fully accountable for the results of this plan and also the charter. Now to you, all the residents, communities, civil society, businesses, the media, development partners of our city. I want to appeal to you, please support us fully to implement this plan and this charter. And also hold us to account throughout the ambitious journey to a clean, green, and prosperous Lelongue. I thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you so much, CEO. As you can see, that indeed he brings a great pride to launch these two documents. You have heard from the CEO that it's been a journey that has taken some time, but here we are today. So a round of applause for the council. Thank you. I'd like to recognize the presence of the Honorable Minister of Forestry and Natural Resources, Honorable Nancy Temple, who has also just joined us. You're welcome. As we proceed with the program, ladies and gentlemen, let me also let you know that we are live streaming on Zoom and Facebook. So just for your noting that we have other viewers that also take an interest to the launch of these two documents. Honorable Minister, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we now proceed with the program and at this point in time, allow me to invite Dr. Thomas Montali. He is our guest speaker this afternoon, and he's the Director General of the National Planning Commission. Dr. Montali.
Allow me also to take my mask just for a moment so I can, as John said, be more audible. I didn't know that I'm this tall until I've reached this platform. The Deputy Minister of Local Government, Honorable Halim Adoud, MP, and the Honorable Minister of Forestry and Natural Resources, Honorable Nancy Temple, has joined us this afternoon. Your worship, the mayor, Councillor Juliana Kaduya, and all the Lelongue City councillors here present. I also want to recognize the presence of Councillor Brian Yasulu, the mayor of Mzuzu, who is with us here as well. My colleague, Director Richard Hara, from the Ministry of Local Government, and the CEO of the City Assembly of the Council, Mr. John Chomey, and indeed your management team that are here, distinguished guests, members of the fourth estate, all protocols observed. Honorable Deputy Minister and your worship, the mayor, first, let me say sincere word of thanks for having me to make the keynote speech at this auspicious occasion this afternoon. It is such an honor to the National Planning Commission. Let me begin by applauding very sincerely your worship, the mayor, the councillors, the CEO of the Lelongue City Council, and your management, and indeed the advisory that you've got from the Deputy Minister and her team at the Parent Ministry for coming up with this first-ever strategic plan for the city. As they say, where there is no vision or plan, people perish. And Lelongue City has decided not to perish. Reading the vision and the mission statements, one can see how relevant, motivational, and befitting they are for a capital city. The vision of a clean, green, and prosperous Lelongue and the mission that embodies it, it shows servant leadership of tirelessly saving all the citizens of Lelongue as defined in the strategic plan that is being launched today. And if this is followed through, we'll set the example for other existing cities in Malawi and indeed the eight secondary cities that are in the offing of being developed. And talking of eight development cities, when I see the Deputy Minister, I'm always reminded about her passion for seeing these secondary cities being developed as guided by the leadership of the country. By the way, I do hope that the council will translate this, especially the client service charter, into Tijewa so that we can all be in a position to know what is it that the council is trying to do for us as citizens in Lelongue, and then we can also hold each other accountable. I'll be looking forward to reading about it. I hope Tamara, that's the way you interpret it, but I'm sure that you'll find the right way to get that done. This strategic plan, Honorable Deputy Minister, will be an important guide as it clearly defines the socio-economic services needed for the capital city. And what is exciting is it defines clearly what needs to be done, how the city will mobilize the resources for realizing them, as well as the management and governance prerequisites to deliver on this in the next five years, as the CEO rightly highlighted. Having such a strategic plan is worthy of applauding, especially being the first of this kind, but we'll clap more when you deliver on the plan. Knowing the determination of the leadership, both at the City Assembly and the Parent Ministry, we can only be optimistic. After all, we just don't have a choice as a country but to deliver. Hence, producing visible results as a value proposition that has been isolated and emphasized by her worship, the mayor, in her foreword in the strategic plan is worthy of the silver and gold and gives so much hope to us all. It is even encouraging that the client service charter is also being launched today. So the message the city and the Parent Ministry is sending to all of us is simple. You basically are saying to us, "Hold us accountable. We mean what we say, and we'll deliver on the strategic plan." This, your worship, is courage at best. You don't normally get to have the strategic plan being launched concurrently with the service charter. So you are basically trying to rise to the challenge of servant leadership. And one thing that I can assure you is that the longer residents will truly hold you accountable, but will also be truly proud if you deliver on this. And as I said, we have no doubt, given the determination of the leadership there, that this will happen. But allow me to situate this whole discussion within our country's vision, the Malay 2063. As we all know, as Malawians, we've agreed to have an inclusively wealthy and safe reliance nation by the year 2063, or even sooner. This aspiration is anchored on three interlinked pillars of agriculture productivity and commercialization, industrialization, with mining as an important integral, always asking ourselves, "Mining for what?" and urbanization, so that we transform our existing cities into world-class cities while creating other secondary cities and tourism hubs. But why should we be focusing on urbanization as a pillar for wealth creation and safe reliance? It's a good question, and glad you ask. Traditionally, urbanization in Malawi has been treated with suspicion. Not surprising, therefore, that over the years, development programming has largely focused on poverty reduction and how to improve rural livelihoods. Distinguished guests, your worship, the mayor, and the honorable minister, listen to this. Urban centers are key drivers of the national economy as they are centers of economic activities and most of the infrastructure services you see in any country. To make the point for Malawi, Malawi's four cities alone account for 33% of the country's GDP. In other words, for every hundred quarter that you see being made in this economy, 33 quarter comes only, 33 quarter comes from just the four cities of Blantaya, Lelongue, Zomba, and Mzuzu, and the rest is sharing the balance. And so these are hubs of decent jobs and wealth creation that we're talking about. So each time a city is being developed with better socio-economic services and infrastructure amenities, as Lelongue is trying to do in their strategic plan, its contributions to overall national cake becomes bigger and bigger. The point being that developing urban centers will help in getting the country to the middle-income status much faster than otherwise. Matter of fact, the need for urbanization has steadily risen over the years. Given Malawi's high population growth rate, which is amongst the highest in the region at 3% in 2018, conservatively, it is expected that the country's population will more than double from around 18 million that we have today to over 45 million by 2063. Nonetheless, though some of our cities are growing fast, like Lelongue, growing at around 4%, Malawi's urban population remains very low, at 15%, and is amongst the lowest in the world. The need for urbanization is further intensified by the pressure on rural smallholder populations to migrate from subsistence farming as plots of land are declining to uneconomic levels. Some 75% of farmers in Malawi have less than one hectare of land, and other alternative rural livelihoods remain very limited in this country. With such small land holdings, urbanization will be key in establishing centers of agro-processing and industrial hubs which can absorb the currently largely idle and unproductive populations in rural areas. So any future farming will have to be modern and largely on small pieces of land like greenhouses, while the rest of the population gets to be pushed to make a living in the developing urban centers like we have now in Lelongue. Farming will have to be a commercial enterprise and ventured into by design, not because people have no choice, but to steal the piece of land that their grandfathers gave to them. However, urbanization will need a high degree of planning, investments, and enforcement mechanisms in order to address the risks that encompass the migration shifts. Rural urban migration in Malawi is increasingly exerting pressure on the already inadequate urban infrastructure, including housing facilities. Many urban centers are poorly planned and do not adequately provide services such as water supply, sanitation, electricity supply, education, health, good transport system, and even recreation. Failure to enforce city, municipal, and town masterplans has led to deterioration of efforts around planned urbanization. So the need of developing existing cities to world-class hubs and taking development to the people through the creation of planned secondary cities based on existing economic potentials in those localities must happen earlier as part of the operationalizing the inclusive wealth creation and safe reliance agenda. So the policies, strategies, and investments that get urbanization to be well-planned, as Lelongue City is doing through this strategic plan launch today, was the key to resilient and sustainable. was the key to resilient and sustainable urbanization. Honourable minister and your worship, the mayor, the Malawi 2063 First Ten Year Implementation Plan, which just got approved by cabinet recently and is due for launch very soon, has two key milestones. First, to graduate the country into a middle-income economy by 2030. And second, to meet most of the sustainable development goals by the same period, 2030, this being the last decade of action. So let me be quick to point out with hindsight, by the way, that the plan that is being launched today could even have worked better if it was aligned to the first ten-year implementation plan, a whole ten-year period. But we excuse you because it was being crafted before the MIP one was approved. But I think the question we should all be asking is, strategic planning for what? And so we are planning to graduate this economy into middle-income economy and meet most of these stages. But that does not negate the point that we still can achieve a clean, green, prosperous Lelongue even with a five-year plan. And I think at that point, we can always review and see how best we are still aligning to the first ten-year implementation plan. The point, the idea really is that we need to move away from being a country of planners with short termism by planning long-term beyond tenure of office and then getting ourselves into implementation than just being in cycles of planning all the time. So the MIP one has been modeled on the Malawi 2063 in terms of the pillars and the nablars and urbanization is a central pillar. To begin with, just to bring to the point, somehow a point to what the CEO mentioned. All the, in the MIP one, there are some game changers in there. These include reviewing the urban laws and policies to transfer urban land management functions to town city councils so as to have one landlord in cities. This will facilitate, this will facilitate effective city investments according to their master plans, which also need to be reviewed or developed to meet the modern city needs. Second is establishing a minimum integrated economic infrastructure package, covering reliable and all-time accessible energy, befitting road network like is happening in Lelongue, the six lanes, four lanes and so on, and readily available ICT networks for the cities, that internet should be so accessible to everybody, again aligned to the city master plans, while being mindful of protecting the environment for our children by employing green city development strategies. And talking of this language, I know that honourable Nancy Temple will be smiling under her mask. Third is the need for innovative and sustainable municipal self-financing mechanisms aimed at enhancing own revenue generation and management capacities. And lastly, enforcement of the physical planning and urban statutes as well as bylaws. Enforcement has been one key challenge where we have the statutes and the laws, but for one reason or another, we shy away from enforcing them. With regard to enforcement of the city bylaws, having municipal police and municipal courts, as is the case in most progressive cities, is worth a consideration. One area of ensuring sustainable self-financing is implementation of innovative, cost-effective valuation and billing of all city properties. In support of this, would be need to modernize the revenue collection by designing, developing and operationalizing deployment of digital geographic information database of all rentable properties in the city. Honourable minister and your worship, as I draw to a close, what is encouraging is that most of these elements that I've mentioned are actually reflected in the strategic plan. The real task begins now and that is implementation. This has to be collective though and coordinated. This is more the reason why government through the National Planning Commission and the Ministry of Economic Planning are facilitating establishment of the PIRA and NABLA coordination groups. That includes a PIRA coordination group on urbanization and this is part of the MIP one implementation. This will ensure prioritization and monitoring as well as holding each other accountable in delivering on our urbanization priorities as a country. A world-class, clean and green, prosperous Lelongue city will be the pride of us all. A shoddy and dusty city, on the other hand, will not be attractive to us, to tourists, to investors. And in future, when it gets out of our hand, our children will ask, how did we get to this and who was in charge? So we all are obliged as stakeholders to make the Lelongue City Council strategic plan goals a reality. We should aspire so quickly to reach a stage where we will no longer need to make reference to the client service charter because the services will speak louder on their own. Honourable minister, your worship, the mayor, the CEO and distinguished guests, let me finish with this final reflection. The positions that we all hold in here are temporal. I'll repeat that. The positions that we all hold in here are temporal, others actually more temporal. But the legacy we leave will forever. How shall we be remembered? Let us make our children and their children to be forever proud. When they want to read the positions of influence we held and the actions we took when we had those positions of influence in making Lelongue city to be counted amongst the green, clean and most prosperous cities of the world. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. A round of applause for Dr. Montali once again. Let me recognize the presence of the Mzuzu City Council Mayor, the worship, Mr. Yasulu, councillor Yasulu. You're welcome. Honourable minister, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I did allude that there will be presentations elaborating further on the two documents and of course, taking us a bit deeper into what as the Lelongue City Council would like to strategize to ensure that these two documents are indeed effective and they are producing results. So at this point in time, there will be a presentation on the strategic plan and this will be done by the Director of Finance and we'll also see the Director of Administration coming in and also the Director of Planning. So Director of Finance, Mr. Iliam Banda.
I hope I can also be allowed to take off my mask. Honourable minister and all distinguished guests, I'll take you through the highlights of the financial strategy for the Lelongue City Council. As already indicated by our chief executive, the strategy is in three components and one of the main components is the financial strategy. So basically, under finance, we have come up with four main strategic objectives. And these are under budgeting, revenues, assets and liabilities and of course, scrutiny. The main goal of our financial strategy is basically to fix the city council's finances. How we intend to do this is we will significantly increase our revenues because we know we have capacity and we have a base that can give us more than what we are actually collecting now. At the same time, we would want to improve on allocating those resources. We have had issues in terms of allocation of resources and we have to make sure that at least part of those resources are freed up to expand critical service delivery. Just taking you back to what we were at the base, we are developing this strategy. Our financial status was one of the poorest in country. We were only able to deliver service which is valued at ten point six quata per person in the city. And if you look at that value, it's too small. There's nothing that we can show. Most of our revenues were being allocated to paying staff. We had an overbloated establishment. And corresponding to that, all the funds were being used on operations and very little, if not zero, were being allocated for infrastructure development. We therefore have come up with the four strategic objectives as I indicated. The first one being to make our budget transparent, prioritized and result oriented. We have been budgeting, but it was being taken as one of those things. People would budget today, they submit. Tomorrow you find what they are requesting to do is outside the budget. Our budget was not transparent enough. We couldn't come down to indicate exactly what we were budgeting for and what we would want to achieve. At the same time, we'd want to make sure that there is prioritization. We have to look at what are the main priorities with the resources that are available. We have to prioritize our resources and make sure that at the end of the day, there is result. We have to show something on the ground. Coming to the situation, yes, budgeting has been done. But as a council, in most of the past years, we have not taken it as a very, very important thing where big decisions can be made. There have been over expenditures on activities, over expenditures on administration-related activities. But what we would want is by end of the financial year 2024, 2025, at least eighty percent of our resources should be allocated to service delivery. We have set up annual targets, starting with fifty percent of our sources in the current financial year and we believe by twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we should be at eighty. And there are specific strategies that we will be implementing. On top of it is allocation. We have to make sure that we agree on the allocation formulas. The sources that will be available has to be raised for specific service delivery. The next strategy is we should come up with realistic targets, targets that are challenging in terms of our revenue collection. And then the third strategy is we have to make sure that we promote transparency. We are moving to from itemized budgeting method, we'd want to go to output-based. So when we are budgeting, we have to focus on outputs and at the end of the year, each directorate, each program should be able to show what outputs they have achieved. And then the last strategy under this strategic objective is to bring in rewards. Where there's innovation, we'd want to reward for additional budget allocation. The second strategic objective is basically to significantly increase our revenues. And under that, we have six strategies. And the current situation where we are moving from is basically we have had low revenue compliers. We have statutory targets which we are not even being looked at. We'd want as we go on, the statutory targets should be the targets that we should be working on. We have had challenges. A lot of moral administration. There have been corruption at the lower level. What we'd want is to bring in systems to make sure that is tackled. And our aim is basically to increase our revenues from the current budgets of about three, four billion and by twenty-four, twenty-five, we'd want to be at about nine, ten billion. And we have set annual targets, starting with the current financial year at six point one billion and we'd want to move to about ten point four. And then we have six strategies. The first strategy is we have to introduce incentives. And added to that, we have a lot of uncorrected revenue. A number of property rate payers have not paid their money to us. What we'd want is we are going to step up legal action and of course get some political support so that they don't interfere in the correction of the revenues. The second strategy under this strategic objective is to expand the tax base. Amongst a number of things that would be tackling, the first one is we'd want to introduce what are called old executives. We'd want to start from the world. Involve the members at the ground to correct revenue. And then the third strategy is to strengthen our data management. There have been a system where revenue data has been managed in silos. What we'd want is to integrate so that at least we are able to properly manage. At the same time, we want to outsource revenue correction where it's not efficient for the council to be collecting that revenue. So we'll be assessing all our revenue sources and see which sources can be outsourced so that they are corrected by outsiders. And again, the other strategy is the departments that we have in the council. Under each of the departments, there are revenue sources. But what has been happening is that particular directorate would just focus on expenditures. So what we'd want is revenue correction should be a cross-cutting issue across all the directories. It should just be left to the directorate of commerce or the director of finance. All the directors, one of the things that would be assessed on is how have they performed in terms of revenue correction. And the last strategy under this strategic objective is to simplify the revenue system. What we'd want is to automate the revenue correction system. Then the third objective, strategic objective is mainly to eliminate unproductive debt. We are coming from a time when each time our cash flow is not that okay, we would go and borrow, borrowing for consumption. What we'd want is to move out of that and make sure that we invest in assets that are used for service delivery. Our situation where we are coming from is a situation where we have had large debts. Accumulated a lot of debt with the Malawi Revenue Authority, who are not able for a number of years to remit the taxes. So it has accumulated to a very, very huge amount. So it has accumulated to a very, very huge amount. At the same time, if you look at our liabilities and compare with our local generated revenues, our liabilities are about or were about one twenty three percent of our local generated revenue, which is a bad, bad status. So a lack of liquidity has affected our ability basically to deliver the services because most of our money was being used uh on operations. And we are not even able to release people who have reached retirement age because we couldn't pay their terminal uh benefit. We have had insufficient funding in terms of investment and capital accumulation. So basically, our vision is in twenty four, twenty five, the ratio of um our debt to our local generated revenue should be eighteen percent. We are reducing it from wherever it was at one twenty three. And in the best year, we were at fifty nine percent and we want to go down to eighteen percent. And we have developed three many strategies under this strategic objective that's to create a prioritized infested fund that will be able to pay off uh retrenchment costs, which most of it has already been done in the last financial year. We have retired about, I think, two hundred or one fifty employees who are supposed to retire between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. We were able to retire them last year. And our plan is also make sure that the loans that we have are created and the areas that we have with Malabar Revenue Authority are also paid. And then the last strategy under this strategic objective is to establish and implement a formula-based asset acquisition. The council has not been able to replace assets. We have vehicles, service delivery vehicles, which are over twenty years old. And most of the times, they are on breakdown. What we would want is going forward, we should be able to replace these assets in time. And then the last uh strategic objective under finance is to regain the credibility. In the process, we have lost credibility with all the institutions that have an oversight function on our council. We have not been able to report in time. Uh we have had issues where we have our financial or annual financial statements not audited for the past nine years. What we want to do is to get out of this situation. And just to report to the audience here is by June twenty twenty, we had prepared all the financial statements and we had submitted them. And we have just had the first audit of our financial statements. And now we are waiting for the report. Otherwise, our target is to make sure that every year we have an unqualified audit opinion. And we have too many strategies here is to complete. The first one is to complete all external financial reporting and audit requirements, which we are almost there, and strengthen the internal audit unit. We have had a very weak internal audit unit in terms of numbers. And we would want to upgrade that. And just for information purposes, we should be the first council who have established an audit service committee fully freighted, not under finance directorate. We have done that and we believe that's part of strengthening uh our internal audit unit. Ladies and gentlemen, that's basically our financial strategy. Thank you so much.
Our guest of honor, our honorable Deputy Minister and all Protocles observed. Our second pillar is management. As you all are aware, management is the engine of service delivery. Unfortunately, sorry. Unfortunately, uh Longo City Council has not been responsive enough to the demands or the complaints raised by the residents. Therefore, as a way forward, we have come up with a goal specifically on management. And that is to adopt management, I mean modern management practices by enriching private sector initiative and also partnering, embedding a culture of good governance, ef- efficient service delivery, and at the same time, performance management. Under this one, our strategic objectives are five. We're going to deal with the organizational culture, the PPP, the donors, civil society, and also the central government as partners. And also restructure, particularly to do with human resource. Finally, it's also the issue of accountability for results. And that has to be, uh I mean, to do with performance management. Members, our first strategic objective is to transform organizational culture and foster good governance. Under this one, we want to focus on the culture, the organizational culture itself. As I had on mentioned, probably in the documentary, the culture which we have had and were so much used to is quite conservative. And we tend to prevent or restrain any new idea. The way we would want the council to run is maybe the way it was being run in nineteen eighties. This is an issue which we want to change amongst ourselves as members of staff. The C O also mentioned a number of values. Uh hardworking, integrity, customer, and the services first, innovation. These are the core values which we intend to instill amongst ourselves and also all those that do partner with us. In terms of governance, corporate governance, as you are aware, relies on council members that are empowered, capable of making sound decisions. We intend to build capacity of all council members, including key staff, while instilling those values which I mentioned. On this one, we are also calling upon our partners to assist us in building capacity of our councillors and also members of staff. Another point which maybe I also want to highlight is the seven strategies which are there are issues to do with positive leadership, systematically engaging the citizens to identify service delivery constraints, mobilizing ideas, and so forth. Under systematically engaging the citizens, as you are aware, the council now has a website, we've come up with the toll-free line, and several channels which would want to involve our um our residents, including town hall meetings. In that way, we would be getting more ideas from our residents and at the same time, uh bring them closer to us that are serving these masters. We have just come up with a service charter and that's one of uh trying to foster on good governance. The second strategic objective is to do with the PPP so that we provide thirty eight different service deliveries, I mean services. What we want to do is to move the council from an organization that manages staff to an organization that provides services by managing contracts with the private sector. Surely, you've seen us engaging the private sector. One of it is during the study where I've seen the first fountain around the presidential highway. That one is to do with the PPP. And some have already adopted the streets. The same presidential highway to Bingu Stadium is adopted by the private sector. So this relieves us. It keeps us at monitoring and supervising the way they are also uh providing that particular service in terms of street lighting and also um uh the uh the the parks and the fountains which we intend to build. For us to do that, we are also aware that we need to build internal capacity. And that has to do with the procurement uh section. So want to have officers that who guide us or manage all the contracts able and at the same time, get value for money. We are also aware that as a council, we don't have all the resources to fulfill all our vision or I mean our dreams. And for us to realize such dreams, we want to partner with the donors and also the civil society so that we can raise up to or I mean minimum five billion by the time we reach twenty twenty five. So when we come to a doors knocking uh for various services or maybe initiatives, please open your doors because by that, uh we want to achieve a number of uh plans for 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 us. The fourth strategic objective is to improve productivity. As it was also mentioned, uh we have had a council which is so lax in terms of the way they perform. It's like by the end of the day, one wouldn't point at what one has done. So want to hold our staff, members of staff accountable. And they want to do that by restructuring and also transforming um a number of duties and also divisions so that by the end of the day, we have clear outputs. We are a council that largely employs the unskilled laborers. And they um uh want to do away with that by partnering with the private sector, as I mentioned. Also remove issues of absenteeism. Really, we have had challenges where we don't even know who reported and who did not report. But I'm pleased to say it here now that we have embraced IT. For now, we are one of the first councils that has introduced biometric gadgets so that each member of staff should be able to log in and log out and link that particular information to the payroll. That we think it will remove all the ghosts and all issues to do with absenteeism. Further to that, in terms of restructuring, there are new services which we'll come up with, like the private sector initiative development, that's an area which we want to focus on. Environmental protection and the municipal police, which has already been mentioned. We expect that by the end of twenty twenty five, we should have at least the hundred, uh one thousand hundred and five members of staff from the current one, which is about uh one thousand five hundred. The last uh strategic objective is create accountability for results. On this one, want to bring strategic plan to accountability for performance. And we'll come up or we have already started coming up with performance targets, performance agreements. And we'll set up a delivery unit, which will be a unit under the office of the C O uh so that it monitors the deliverables that each one of us is supposed to uh uh provide. Lastly, under this one is the service charter. It's also to do with accountability. As we are launching this service charter today, we are geared that we respond timely and according to the standards that were prescribed in that charter. At this point in time, we are calling or appealing to you all members here or guests that you help us to implement this uh these aspirations in terms of management, which covers the technical team and as well as the political arm. Thank you so much.
Honorable Minister, all Protocle observed, I will be presenting on service delivery. Maybe the question that we are answering there is why do we exist as a city council? I think everyone of us, each one of us knows that when we look at the city council, we expect services to be delivered. And that's one of the first thing that comes uh when we look at the city council. So when we're looking at the service delivery, we noticed that there are a number of gaps uh which need to be addressed if we are to improve our service delivery. Now, in service delivery, the main goal, we're looking at the provision of services in a in a more efficient and cost-effective manner. And we are focusing on a number of areas. We thought that these are key areas that would make an impact to bring about services that the city residents deserve. So we're looking at areas of private sector development, environmental protection, uh solid waste management, transport, public health. We're looking also at the schools provision for the youth as well as town planning. Now, under service delivery, we have got a number of strategic objectives. And the first strategic objective is the sparring of local economic development. And this one, the main uh department within the city council that is driving that is the Directorate of Commerce. And so far, when we look at this directorate, it's been concentrating mainly on revenue generation. So we've been known mostly for collection of revenue, issuance of licenses and so on. But now we want to shift from that to more of creation of an environment where businesses can strive. So that's what we are now looking at to the creation of an environment that would uh promote businesses within the city more than now what we're doing before. So what we're looking at over the next four years with this strategic plan is that we're moving, we're looking at a time where we have over one thousand six hundred vendors being supported. So we're looking at the provision of spaces where businesses, especially for the poorest, the lowest in the business sector, you're looking at the, for example, the vendors, the provision of markets and so on. If we look at the presentations from the finances, the management, it all at the end of the day is leading to provision of services. Then apart from that, we have got a number of strategies which we're going to use to achieve that. We've got another strategic objective, which is objective number two under service delivery, which is greening of the city. So this one is responding to the vision of the city where we want to keep the city as green as possible. I think we all agree that Lirongwe City is endowed with a lot of natural resources. We've got five major rivers and a lot of streams crisscrossing the city, which gives us an opportunity to actually green this city. But at the moment, when we look at our riverbanks, our open spaces, most of these have become areas where sand mining, rock mining, brick molding is taking place. And even waste management, instead of, most of these areas have become dumping places. So we want to transform that. We want to change that. That's why we also have that strategy of the ecological quality that my colleague also talked about. And we're looking at creation of parks so that we have a network of parks within the city. So we are at the verge whereby we would like to reclaim the riverbanks and green them. And with this, we can only achieve if we work together. And that's a reminder again that this strategy is not only for the council. We have our responsibilities, but also the citizens have a major role to play in this. So together, we can achieve a green city. We also are looking at the area of waste management. I think this is one of the services that a lot of people point out to. Because when we're talking of a clean city, this is the hallmark of it all. The service that we provide in terms of management of waste. We're looking at the whole value chain from the production, the transportation, the storage and the disposal. So we're looking at the final end. For example, if we talk of the dump site, a lot of people do not want to go to that site because it is an open site. So when we look at waste collection, currently, we are hovering around twenty-two percent or thirty percent of the waste that is produced within the city that is collected. But sometimes we're only talking about collection. Currently, we have a number of private operators in the waste sector. Where are they dumping the waste? So we're looking at how we can manage the whole value chain in waste management and improve this one so that we can improve the environment in which the city residents are living. The other area of service delivery is our roads whereby we're looking at making our roads safer, cleaner and less congested. If we have congested the roads, they have a number of negative social economic impacts. And nobody wants to be on a congested road. We look at our roads, most of them are pothole. This is mainly because when we look at most of our roads, they were developed, honorable minister, long time ago in the seventies. And you find that most of these roads have outlived their lifespan over and over again, so that most of this, even patching, now can no longer wait. So we're coming up with, when coming up with that strategy, we are looking at how we can improve that sector while recognizing the fact that we have a shared responsibility with the central government through the Roads Authority, which looks at the main roads and the secondary roads. Under the council is responsible for the urban and residential roads. But this is an area which we feel that once improved, then the socioeconomic lives of the people in the city will also improve. And the other area that we're looking at in the transport sector is also to look at the public transport itself. Because we know that by just improving the infrastructure without looking at public transport, then we still have got bottlenecks. And we will also be looking at just the traffic management itself so that we improve in the area of congestion. And also to increase in, on safety, we're looking at provision of street lights. I remember sometime back, people used to call Lirongwe a dark city. And that is what we also want to work on to change so that we improve the safety of all the road users. And we cannot come up with a strategy without looking at public health. Because if we don't have a healthy population, then we won't achieve much. And we are in challenging times, COVID times, and we didn't want to leave that out. So when we're looking at public health as a council, we are looking at our role in the mitigation of COVID. Because we are a central piece in terms of getting the message out so that the issues of social distancing, the issues of masking up, issues of hygiene are delivered to the people that we have. Now we have the issue of even the vaccines itself so that we increase the uptake of the vaccine. So we are going to play a major role in that one. And we're also looking at laboratory testing. We want to enhance laboratory testing of water. And we're going to do that in conjunction with Lirongwe water board so that we have a lot of testing of water quality, we're looking at the food and we're looking at industrial effluent so that we make sure that the effluent that is being released into the water bodies is something that is manageable. And as a council also, we are responsible for maternal and child healthcare. Currently, we are not doing very well in that one because of the limited range of services that we are providing and also the limited number of facilities that we currently have. So we're looking at increasing the number of such facilities to aid by the end of the strategic plan period. And also that we increase the range of services that we provide in those facilities. Looking at Lirongwe, just like other cities, we have an issue of housing. We're talking of housing basically because everybody that comes into the city, one of the basic requirements that he has to have is housing. So we've looked from the planning side, we're looking at assisting at least twenty-five thousand poor households with housing land and land formalization process. It might not be the best approach at the end of the day, but at the moment, we have seen the way the city has been growing and exploring mainly because of the rapid population growth that is there. That is not being made by, with the provision of access to land. So as public institutions, we haven't been able to work together so that we can put our resources together to meet the demand that is there. So we haven't been giving out access to land, we haven't been giving out plots at scale to meet the demand that is there. So that is why we would like to combine the legalization process as well as the provision of land for development of residential units. It's not only in the residential sector. We will be working to also make sure that we work together with the Ministry of Lands, Malawi Housing Corporation so that we make available land for other uses as well. So in five years' time, we would like to see at least twenty-five thousand poor households with titles to their landed properties. And at the center of it all is again, we go back to finance. You cannot talk about service delivery without talking about properly planning for what you're going to use the funds, the finances that you have. And throughout our presentations, you will have seen, honorable minister, that we are concentrating not only on locally generated revenue, but we are also tapping in into the private sector. Because we realize that on our own, using our own locally generated revenue, we will not be able to meet all the requirements. But on our part, we're looking at coming up with a capital investment program which we can follow and we can see the progress that we are making. Currently, the city council does not have a comprehensive capital investment program. So we feel that with the strategic plan in place, we should be able to plan for investments and how we are going to use the finances. And the other area of interest is basic education. Because as a council, we are also responsible for provision of basic education. With the decentralization, we find that the council is responsible for the quality of education, the inspections that have to be conducted in the schools. We have to provide for learning and teaching materials to improve the environment in which education is taking place. We have a challenge in the city when we look at the teacher pupil ratio. It varies from school to school, from the poorest to the highest. So we have to look at that and see how we can normalize that. We have infrastructure that is dilapidated and it requires a lot of maintenance. We have to provide for classroom blocks as well. So we, through the education sector, we are going to provide at least about one percent of our revenue towards the basic education improvement. And if we ignore the youth, then we would be creating a disaster. Because when we look at our city, it is a youthful city. If you look at the statistics, for example, from twenty-eight, twenty-eighty, which found out that fifty-eight percent of the population of Lirongwe were between the ages of ten and thirty-five. So through the, if you look at the capital investment program, it's also addressing the infrastructure that would be required to be used by the youth so that they can become better developed and fit in the society at the end of the day. So in terms of service delivery, that is the last strategic objective on the youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camila. He is the Director for Planning. And guests of honor, ladies and gentlemen, we're probably going to have the final presentation and then we're going to have the speeches before us, but I'll take you through our client service charter. So our client service charter, as I already alluded to earlier, that for a long time, we have worked in a closed shell. We've heard from the clients, the residents, but probably we've not been responsive enough and probably we've not been given the feedback they desire. But probably we've also not been accommodating their input. So I'm going to have an introduction on the client service charter, the objectives, the key services that are offered by the council, the service delivery standards for the council and the clients' rights and obligations and feedback. So what is the client service charter? So it is a standard framework or a timeline within which certain services must be delivered and accessed by clients. So this framework is going to give an opportunity of a time timeline where the council is to deliver or to give feedback to any queries or anything that has been inquired or for anything that has been presented to the council to action on. So we do not have, well, now we do have, and why now? So LCC has operated without a charter for a long time. And it is a realization of one of our strategic plan or core values, customers and services first. So we believe that we cannot work in a cocoon. We believe that our customers come first and our services will also have to come first. So the objectives of the client service charter is that the client service charter seeks to inform, to enlighten, to compel and enhance the following. So awareness of available municipal services, we want people to be able to have that awareness in terms of our services, awareness of how residents can access municipal services. They should be able to have that opportunity to access those municipal services. Awareness of key requirements to access services to improve LCC responsiveness to clients' needs. I already alluded to that, that we feel that this is very important. To improve quality of service delivery, we believe that at the same time as we have a two-way system of information and feedback and the flow, we should be able to improve on our service delivery and produce quality results. To promote transparency and accountability in service delivery and to define the role of clients in enhancing service delivery. So we were already informed on our core values, believing that our core values are hard work, the integrity, customers and services first. As you can see, we keep repeating customers and services first because now we believe that we need to embrace that framework that our customers and services must always come first. Producing visible results, yes, the clients may be able to inform us, may be able to come with their queries, their complaints, but we must make sure that in that client service charter, we are mandated to produce the results. We have to give the feedback and to act on whatever has been produced to us, but also innovation. So what are the key services that are offered by LCC? So there are nearly sixty different services that are rendered by Lilongo City Council that are emanating from fire and rescue services, which we're probably all aware of, the public works, land administration and town planning services, sanitation and clinical services. The previous speaker also went into detail into some of these services from the directories. There's public health services, environmental management, conservation services, commercial property services, primary education services, civic functions and financial management services. So what are the service delivery standards for the council? So our services are available from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM on Mondays to Friday with a one-hour lunch break between 12:00 PM and 1:00 PM. So the fire and rescue services are also available 24 hours. We have our official website. We already heard that we now have that official website, www.lcc.mw. And we've now introduced periodic newsletters as a form of a report to say to our clients, to our residents, they have to have access to these newsletters and be able to appreciate what we have done, what we are achieving and what we have planned for the residents. We have our other social media outlets that we've been recently taking charge of, WhatsApp and our Facebook page, Lilongo City Council. And we are currently live actually on our Facebook page. So responsiveness, we have to respond to calls promptly and act on requests promptly. I think this also alluded to, that this is also one of the main or the core reason why we want this client service charter to be effective. So we have to respond promptly and act to requests promptly. Timely effect payments of good services and works. So as you can see, that in the client service charter, it gives the council the mandate to ensure that within the working hours, we are available for our residents, we are available for our clients and we are available for those that are 24 hours, that we are there to give that service delivery. So service improvement, timely delivery of services and ensure value for money. And there's anti-corruption. The service charter will also act as an information on corrupt activities that have been reported to institutional integrity committee. So we do not just want to have those, if we are going to be given some leads to information on corrupt practices, we want to ensure that the client's service charter mandates us to act on those and not just sit and lay back and let them pass by. So what are the clients' rights and responsibilities? We also believe that the client has their own rights and responsibilities. So the client shall have the following rights. Access to rightful information on the required services, as already alluded to. Access to the services within the time period that is defined in the charter. So you'll find that in the charter, it actually highlights and gives in detail all these factors that have been incorporated in the charter. They have access to the services without discrimination and they submit complaints on the delivery of services and provide suggestions or recommendations to improve service delivery. If you remember that earlier on, probably most of all the speakers that were here, they did emphasize on appealing to the residents that we should work together. So one way of working together is to give those constructive recommendations, constructive criticism and of course, to ensure that we also improve on our service delivery. The client obligations, the client shall have the following obligations. We anticipate that the client will treat LCC employees and partners with courtesy and respect as much as we are mandated to give service to you, but we are also there to work as a team, to work in unison with all our residents and the clients. So we respect that as much as our team also has to give that respect to our clients and that courtesy, but we also believe that our clients are our partners and we can work in unison if we treat each other with that respect. So respect the LCC core values. We really do anticipate that our clients will respect the core values. Everything that has been stipulated as your obligations as well as our clients to ensure that we have effectiveness in terms of delivering with the client service charter. Provide feedback on services that have been offered. Do not offer a bribe to anyone to access a service. I think this is one of the issues that has been highlighted. As much as we can have our own internal corruption or internal mishaps, we also want to ensure that our clients will not be in the forefront to making things go wrong, to give out these bribes or to kind of support issues of bribery or corruption. So report any incident of corruption. We really do, where you have that information, as you already heard, we've got an internal integrity committee. We also anticipate that you should be able to give or to report that rightful information if you have that information. So the client service charter believes that it is your obligation to report any incidents of corruption. We are there for you. We have our toll-free line 346. You can always report on that. We have our website, our email, which is info@lcc.mw. You can always report on that as well. We believe that the client's obligation is to abide by the relevant laws, the policies and the guidelines in accessing services. So the feedback process, we have our physical address as given there, city center civic offices. We have the postal address through the chief executive's office. We have our email and website, our email info@lcc.mw, our website, www.lcc.mw and of course, our Facebook page, Lilongo City Council. And that's our address and our toll-free line 346. So ladies and gentlemen, Honorable Minister, thank you so much just to give you a brief on the client service charter. I think it's a detailed, but very brief, but very to the point document that really needs all our support. Thank you very much and thank you for your attention. Honorable Minister, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we've had to hear a lot of information. So at this point in time, I would like to just give us a bit of a freshener and I would like to invite the City Public Awareness Arts Group, CIPAB, to just give us one performance and then we proceed with the program. Thank you. So the most exciting thing about this team is that they are all our coworkers. We all work together, Lilongo City Council. So we do have time for play as well. We do have time to relax. So I'm at the Fumbindo and we need, I mean, we want to do my bangga hire. We do hire these out for any functions that you have. Lilongo City Council is top-notch. I thought I'd do a little bit of advertising for them there. Thank you, Honorable Minister, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. At this point in time, I would like to invite her worship, the mayor, councillor Juliana Kaduya, to also come and make her remarks. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The guests of honor, Honorable Halima Dowdi, Deputy Minister of Law Government, the guest speaker, Dr. Thomas Tally, Director General, National Planning Commission, the mayor, Ms. Zuzu Kansana Nsulu, all the chairpersons from Lilongo City Council, the chief executive, Mr. John Chomey, and the members of staff of Lilongo City Council, the directors and managers from Lilongo City Council and our local sisters here present, invited participants here present and those online, members of the press, ladies and gentlemen, and the director of ceremonies. On behalf of the council and residents of the city of Lilongo, I welcome you all to this colorful launch of the strategic plan and service charter for the Lilongo City Council. Please feel welcome. The guests of honor, distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me exceptional honor as the first female mayor of Lilongo City now not only welcome you and speak at this historic strategic plan launch, but also to request our guest of honor, Honorable Halima Dowd, to officially open the launch of the Lilongo City Council strategic plan and the client service charter. But before I proceed to do so, allow me to make a few remarks. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, let me start by stating that the Lilongo City Council strategic plan and client service charter launch have come at the right time when the government of Mal... launch have come at the right time when the government of Malawi is implementing the Malawi Growth and Development Strategy, MGDS 111, which seeks to improve the country's client's account position. This is basically the localization of the Malawi 2063 Agenda and Sustainable Development Goals, to which Malawi government is a signatory. Ladies and gentlemen, Lilongo City Council has a strong vision and desire to transform this city into a real metropolitan, a city which all of us can be proud to live in. We have political will to change our story and destiny. This is what our president, Dr. Lazarus McCarthy Chakwe, is championing both. At city council level and national level, you are all witness to this. Ladies and gentlemen, the kind launch of strategic plan, strategic plan has always been one of my top priority areas since I assumed the office of the mayor because I strongly believe that the city without a strategic plan is like a bus without a driver. It will take, and a bus without a driver, it will take you nowhere. The importance of all inclusive strategic plan for this council cannot be over emphasized. We believe that Lilongo City Council Strategic Plan is a roadmap setting the direction of the city programs and activities with the context of the national long term development goals that includes and understanding that, one, traditional master plan dealing primarily with special design and physical infrastructure extension do not provide adequate answers to increasingly complex social and economic development challenges. Two, cities are not built from above by professional planners, but from below by discrete activities of a myriad of local actors. Number three, cities can and should be seen in comparative and competitive perspective and therefore need the strategies to position themselves vis a vis other cities, nation, national and international. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen. The current service charter complements the Lilongo City Strategic Plan. We now believe in customers and service first. Your council has now set standards in terms of accessibility, responsiveness, service improvement and corruption. The toll-free line 346 will be a telechannion for residents to bring to forward concerns, complaints and compliments to the secretaries. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen. It is therefore imperative that we approach this historic launch on that understanding. Finally, I would like to sincerely thank all of you for coming and also all our partners here present for the support leader to Lilongo City Council, which has made the Lilongo Strategic Plan process and its launch today possible. I would like to thank the guest of honor, Honorable Halima Dowdi. She's on her way to plan there and she was supposed to leave at half past three, but she's here with us. She has a heart to the Lilongo City Council. I think we can have a hand of applause to our Honorable Minister. With these few remarks, it is now my singular honor to call upon our guest of honor, Honorable Halima Dowdi, Deputy Minister of Law Government, to officially open the launch of the strategic plan and the Client Service Charter for Lilongo City Council. Thank you so much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you so much, your worship. Before we can proceed with the guest of honor. Allow me just for briefly to give us a few remarks and then to request the Honorable Minister to come and make her official launch. I would like to invite the Director of Local Government Services, Mr. Richard Hara. Thank you.
Our guest of honor. Honorable Halima Dowdi, Deputy Minister of Law Government. Your worship, the mayor of City of Lilongo, councillor Kaduya. Inabesenshi. Honorable Naseh Tembo. Minister of Forests and Natural Resources. The guest speaker. Minister. Dr. Muntali. The CEO for the Lilongo City. Chairpersons of committees, the City of Lilongo, all CEOs and directors present, ladies and gentlemen. The duty of requesting the guest of honor has already been performed. But please allow me to make a few remarks on behalf of the principal secretary for the Minister of Public Government. In the first place, I would like to join the CEO for Lilongo City by congratulating them for having produced the two documents. Previously, the city was using City Development Strategy, which was not wide and it was not much encompassing. It was talking much in terms of city outlook, city development aspects, but it was not a strategy as it has been formulated this time around. Lilongo City, of course, has been operating based on those premises. But I think using the new approach, it will help in harnessing the different efforts that the directors of the city would be able to handle. Previously, we started efforts of functional review in order to appreciate and see the relevant activities that Lilongo City Council could have been cutting out. But it was not completed. I think it was aborted somewhere due to probably what we, the CEOs and the director of finance hinted on, the issues of unemployment. Now, the functions were specifically showing that I think Lilongo City Council is overemployed. And those that felt threatened, they found their own way of making sure that the city functional review should not be used. I'm sure that it is lying idle somewhere. And it would be important that strategies are properly linked to the functions. You cannot have functions that are not having the strategy for you to deliver the functions. So it's our hope that you're going to marry those two things. Having said that, in our case, the government devolved functions to the cities much, much more than to the district councils for a purpose, to ensure that the service is delivered in an efficient and economic manner. In this case, we are also waiting to work with you, along with you, in order to ensure that the goals of the city are realized. You have invited cross-section of people to attend this function. We would like to urge you to find means of creating windows to get feedback from these stakeholders because most of the times you limit to the full council meetings for the whole management. At the end of the day, you may not get the feedback from other stakeholders. So find means of interacting with the business captains that are in the city, landlords that are in the city, so that we remain relevant in the implementation of the strategies. Otherwise, we may also miss some of the tenets of, of the strategy. The city fathers, to you, my request is continue having your rightful role to ensure that the executive branch of the city lives to its expectations. I think we expect a lot more. Not only that we should look nice, but I think we compare ourselves with the region around us that are improving on transportation, urban transportation systems, roads, bridges and drainage. Maybe I'll not talk about the sewage because it appears this function now is with the water board. But I think we still have to ensure that we remain relevant and we work with them in that respect. We cannot be always be using septic tanks. This is modern Malawi. Since the minister is going away, let me, as I conclude, say on the issues of political interference, I think you have seen a little bit going down in those respects. But the politicians are still asking us to say, how much are we doing? They are asking on behalf of other stakeholders. They want Lilongo to shine. And then the city rates issues, Lilongo and Malawi as such, we have challenges of compliance of city rates. Other cities in the region, their recovery rate of city rates is almost ninety-five, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, but not in Malawi because of the circumstances. In Malawi, we have the building systems of electricity and water, which are done away and separate from the city. In other countries, these issues, they go along together. And then if you don't pay the city rates, you don't get the water, you don't get electricity. As a result, compliance in terms of payment is close to ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. I think this is the practice generally in the region. All the same, what we're saying is, maybe as we are looking at the strategy, let's see how we can finance the strategy by bringing in new legislations that can help us to ensure that residents play their rightful role in contributing to the development because most of the infrastructure that we are asking for, it requires contribution from city rate payers, which is, we are having problems because of compliance issues. As a result, we are asking the central government to do some of the access loads in the cities, which are supposed to have been done by the cities using its local regenerated resources. With these few remarks, your guest of honor, let me request you to make your remarks so that you can launch the two documents. Thank you so much for your attention.
Please allow me to take out my mask as well. Are we from Lilongo City Council or we are from somewhere else? Are we from Lilongo? But we don't look happy. Today is our day. We should be happy because we want the city to look different. No more business as usual. It's business unusual. Your worship, the mayor, councillor Juliana Kaduya. The vice mayor, if he's around. All council committee chair persons. Mayor of Msuzu City, Kansar Nsulu. Mr. Richard Hara, Director of Local Government Services. Mr. John Chome, Chief Executive Officer for Lilongo City Council. Our guest speaker, the Director General for the Planning Commission. All esteemed members of the corporate world. Esteemed representatives of various groups in the city. Development partners, officers of Lilongo City Council. All chair persons of councils here present. All district commissioners here present, any. All government officials here present, members of the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, it gives me great pleasure to preside over the official launch of the Lilongo Strategic Plan and the Client Service Charter and the toll-free line 346 to the city residents. This is unprecedented milestone and this was much overdue. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, you may be aware that the city of Lilongo is the largest growing city in Malawi. Coupled with the status as the capital city of this country, but also being the headquarters of all government institutions. This means the council has a lot of functions that is required to discharge. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. I am aware that for quite some time now, the council has been facing challenges in delivering services to its residents such as waste management and refuse correction, illegal developments, street vending, inadequate infrastructure such as streetlights, quality and durable road networks and drainage. Additionally, the council has not been able to adequately attend to public queries and provide feedback in time. In order to address these challenges in coordinated manner, the council has produced a strategic plan, the Client Service Charter and the toll-free line 346 to the city residents. The strategic plan will provide direction on how the council will achieve its objectives. On the other hand, the Client Service Charter will provide the type of service that the residents should legitimately expect as well as the redress mechanism in case they are aggrieved. Furthermore, the Client Service Charter provides a platform for the residents to freely seek the council services as well as express the queries through the toll-free line 346. And the council official email, which is info@lilongecitycouncil.malawi. And additionally, can always visit the civic offices from Monday to Friday from seven thirty AM to four thirty PM. Your worship, the mayor, ladies and gentlemen. The process of developing the Client Service Charter is rigorous. It involved a meaningful engagement with the clients, clients themselves, so that they do not just receive what public officials offer, but express themselves on what they desire. The charter is a product of an agreement between the service provider and the service user. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. The council has been posting insufficient revenues to provide the basic services required by its residents. And this has led to limited services delivery in so many areas such as waste management, street lighting. such as waste management, street lighting, poor roads and drainage and minimal services that we are supposed to provide. I am informed that the council has put in place strategies strategies to increase its revenue collection through its property rate charges, business licensing and market fees. Previously, before the introduction of the automated revenue information system management, the revenue collection was lower, partly because of using my system, which could be easily manipulated compared to this automated revenue system. Now the council gets real-time updates on how much revenue being collected electronically every day. The automated revenue collection has the capacity to simplify the business license revenue with the residence ability to renew their business license within four hours upon expiry. As earlier stated, Lelongue City Council is experiencing rapid population and urbanization growth. Due to this, its public spaces are under pressure. There have been boom in commercial activities in strategic areas of the city, which has led some open spaces of public land that was planned for recreation being crushed or turned into different purposes. Even the fewer public spaces available for the city dwellers, lack of adequate facilities to support users. And to address this, it is important to explore ways in which to provide different services to the residents. One's option is to embark on the use of public public-private partnership PPP. Some of the investment opportunities that have the potential to spur development activities and provide better services to the residents include the proposed Winera Modern Story Markets, international bus terminal, community center and youth resources center. For the city to look beautiful and green, there's a need to conserve the environment. The natural habitat that we have in Lelongue City, such as the Lelongue and Lingaz River, have been heavily polluted. These rivers have become a dumping site for business operators within the city. A partnership among organizations is inevitable. It has been noted with pleasure that in this respect, the Lelongue Wildlife Trust, UNDP and other partners have embarked on the project known as the Lelongue Ecological Corridor Initiative. The four ecosystems, the Lelongue River, the Lingaz River, the Botanical Gardens and the Sanctuary, will go a long way in addressing the ecological challenges that the council is facing. The plan to establish Eden Park along the Lelongue River is very much endorsed. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. In conclusion, time has come for us to transform Lelongue City and the vehicle is the strategic plan before us today. I therefore plead with you all that we work together as partners to attain a clean, green and prosperous Lelongue. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, it is now my singular honor and privilege to declare the Lelongue City Council's strategic plan and the client service charter and the toll-free line officially launched. And remember, we have COVID-19 disease. Let's fight the disease together by wearing masks, keep social distance, sanitize yourself, wash your hands. I thank you all for attention. May God bless our beautiful country, Malawi. I thank you.
Honorable Minister, I still want to request members of the high table, you worship the mayor and the rest of the members and the representative of the World Bank. I'd like that you have a photograph there before you proceed to your seat with the two documents. May I have members at the high table? Thank you. That's a symbol of joy and happiness in our culture. Thank you so much, honorable minister. And at this point in time, honorable minister, I would just like to have one more performance from CIPAC and then we shall... Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Honorable Deputy Minister, you worship the mayor, all protocols observed. I would like to bring to attention that we have now come to the end of our launch this morning, this afternoon, and we sincerely appreciate your presence for gracing the occasion for these two wonderful and very important documents. In a moment, I will allow the honorable minister to depart from this venue. But honorable minister, you may also wish to have a few refreshments before you leave. Thank you. So at this point in time, ladies and gentlemen, I will allow the media team to get a few interviews with the honorable minister. But before we leave, we did open with a prayer, as is our culture. I would like once again to invite Mr Kamela to close the program with a prayer. Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we once more thank you for watching over the occasion that we had today. As we depart here, Lord, may you continue watching over us and protect us and keep us safe. In Jesus' mighty name we pray, amen.
Thank you so much, honorable minister. You may take leave of us. And ladies and gentlemen, as the minister is leaving, there are some refreshments outside. So please feel free to be part of the gathering out there. Let's have the moment to relate to one another and questions if you may wish to ask further. Thank you once again for gracing this event.
Thank you.